Good evening. I would like to call to order the October 11th, 2021 work session of the York County School Board. This is the season where we see the colors of changing leaves, attend fall festivals, and anticipate upcoming family gatherings. As a school division, we continue to move forward, setting goals, overcoming challenges, providing innovative instruction, and providing the necessary tools to help our students be successful and reach their full potential. This evening, we have a few presentations planned. The first one is the strategic plan update for Goal Three, Objective Three, Seven, Working Conditions. Dr. Shandor.
Thank you, Mr. Higginbotham, and good evening, board members. Tonight's first presentation, as you just mentioned, is on working conditions. Dr. Tony Vladu, our Chief Human Resource Officer, will share this update. Dr. Vladu.
Thank you, Dr. Shandor. Good evening, Mr. Higginbotham, members of the board, and Dr. Shandor. At this time, I have the pleasure of presenting the 2021 Teacher and Staff Working Condition Results. One objective under Goal Three, Staff Support, states that the Division will evaluate working conditions annually and implement appropriate and targeted improvement plans based on the data collected through working condition surveys. Before I begin, I'd like to show some background or share with you some background about the current survey. To do their jobs well, educators need supportive school environments where they feel valued, trusted, and empowered to collaborate. Prior to the current survey in 2017, the York County School Division developed and administered a working condition survey that was modeled on the New Teacher Center, Teacher Empowerment, Leading and Learning, or the TEL survey. This is a valid and reliable instrument that already was administered in 18 states and to more than 1.5 million teachers and staff. In the spring of 2019, the Virginia Department of Education implemented a required survey which was modeled on the teleconstruct. In the spring of 2021, VDOE re-administered the survey. However, this time, it expanded the survey to all school-based teachers and staff, both licensed and non-licensed. Tonight's presentation will review instructional staff as well as non-instructional support staff that are school-based. So as with all surveys, it's important to look at the percentage of staff that participate. So on this slide, you'll have a breakdown of those participation results. So we have 1,053 teachers and parent educators that completed the survey. As a point of reference, we have approximately 900 teachers total and about 300 parent educators. That is a very high completion percentage. In addition to that, we have 254 school support staff. These are non-instructional staff, but certainly they're critical to the operations of the school. So again, we exceeded the participation rate, which VDOE recommends approximately an 80% participation, and we are well north of that. Now, I'd like to take a few moments to share with you some information about the Virginia Working Condition Survey. The purpose of the survey is to help schools create and maintain positive working relationships for professionals in Virginia's public schools. The survey can also provide supporting data to evaluate school-level teaching conditions and examine the impact of such conditions on student achievement and teacher and staff retention. There are plans to re-administer the working condition survey in 2022, which is just around the corner. So there are four domains that the teacher and staff working conditions measure. First, professionalism, which emphasizes staff collegiality, teacher leadership, and autonomy. Second, teaching instruction and student support focuses on the academic environment as well as the workspace environment. Third, school and community supports. And fourth, school safety, which measures perceptions regarding bullying and prevalence of bullying in schools. Now, I'd like to begin sharing the instructional staff through the VDOE Working Condition Survey as a reminder that this includes both teachers and parent educators. So as we look at the data tonight, I'd like to take a few moments to review the information needed to interpret the data, not only on this chart but throughout the presentation. First, the survey uses a Liker scale from 1 through 6, and it indicates the level of agreement. For instance, the responses to the chart on the left range between 4.07 to 4.27, which are all in the agreement level. Also on this chart and throughout this presentation, you'll notice that the division averages are represented in dark blue. The regional averages are represented in green. As a reminder, Region Two includes more than 15 school divisions as far north as Williamsburg, some on Akmac on the eastern shore, as well as far as Franklin and Southampton. So if you connect that geographic area and every school division in between, as far south as Virginia Beach, it includes all of them. And also, the state responses are, as a point of comparison, in dark gray. So now to the results. Professionalism includes two measures, teacher leadership and autonomy. And in this domain, you'll notice that the aggregate responses range between 4.07 to 4.27. Again, this is in the level of agreement. However, as with all surveys, it looks like we have to dig further into this data and analyze the results. At the end of this presentation, I'm going to share with you what we're doing with this data. So again, I'll share that information at that time. To the right, you'll notice the relationship between teachers and students, and this is a level of agreement that a positive relationships exist between teachers and students. As you can see, the division average is above the region as well as the state in that area. Now to Domain Two, which includes staff responses in the area of rigorous instruction and engagement. In the area of rigorous instruction, all of the responses range from 4.84 to 4.92 on the upper scale of the agree range. On the right, you'll see a student engagement, which the responses range from 4.53 to 4.77. As you can see, York County School Division teachers and staff agree that our students have received rigorous instruction, and there's a great deal of student engagement as compared to both the region and the state. Now to Domain Three, which is related to school and community supports. This is the largest category in the survey, and the data presented will be shown over the next three slides. So in the area of school leadership represented on the chart on the left, all of the responses are in the agree range, and YCSD responses are minimally below the region and the state. It's important to remember that this is perception data, and they're multifactorial, and that this information varies by location in school. Again, this is an average. And again, at the end of the presentation, I'll share with you our next steps. The chart on the right represents the level of parental involvement. As you can see, the school division instructional staff responded that they make an effort to get to know parents and guardians of their students at higher level than both the region and the state. On this slide, the chart on the left, you'll notice the responses related to managing student behavior. Though there are slight variation in the level of agreement, the school division rated higher than the state average. On the right, you'll notice that YCSD enjoys a higher level of agreement that students have positive relationships with their peers than both the region and the state. On this slide, you're seeing the level of agreement related to effective classroom and school environment that supports teaching and learning, which is near the state and regional averages. Rounding out Domain Three are the instructional staff levels of agreement related to professional growth opportunities. While we're in line with the state, YCSD instructional staff have a lower level of agreement as it relates to opportunities for professional growth than the state. These areas are related to time to collaborate, professional development resources, and follow-up to professional development. Domain Four responses are related to school safety. As it pertains to feeling safe, that adequate security is provided, that emergency responses and the procedures for those are appropriate, as well as threat assessment processes, though there's slight variation between the region and the state, YCSD had greater level of agreement that adequate security is available than both the state and the regional averages. In other words, as we looked at each question in this domain or this area, YCSD teachers feel more safe and more secure while at their school than their peers across the region and the state. Now to teacher perceptions about the prevalence of bullying. It's important to recognize that a lower number is better on this chart as opposed to the previous charts that you saw. It means that it's less prevalence of bullying. So as you can see, all the responses were in the somewhat disagree range. In other words, as I stated, again, a lower number is better. In this regard, YCSD teachers reported a lower prevalence of bullying than both the state and the region. Yet, another important measure of working conditions surveys are the instructional responses of staff to the question. My school is a good place to work and learn. As you can see on this chart, 91.3% of instructional staff agreed that the schools in the York County School Division are good places to work and learn. Of all of the data presented thus far, this is the most significant result as we compare the working conditions across the region and the state. Represented on this slide are the instructional staff future professional plans. And these numbers are the percent of instructional staff that plan to continue at their school or within YCSD. Though there are slight variations in the data, which is less than 3% across the division, region, and the state, this is a number that I'll continue to monitor closely as it has the potential to impact our ability to staff our schools. While the previous slides were about teacher and parent educator responses to the working condition surveys, over the next slides, I'd like to share with you school-based support staff responses. As a reminder, blue bars represent the school division, green bars represent the Region Two average, and the gray bars represent the state average. As it relates to staff collegiality and relationship between students and staff, YCSD staff have greater levels of agreement than both the region and the state. In other words, there's a greater level of agreement that in YCSD, adults treat students with respect. They want students to do well, and they listen to students. Now to Domain Two, Teaching Instruction and Student Support. On this slide, the level of agreement that students do well at school, that they're proud to be at their school, and they come ready to learn, as well as that they are engaged in lessons in the classroom, is higher than both the region and the state. Again, this is how our staff report the perception of teaching instruction and student support. Now to Domain Three, School and Community Supports. On this slide, staff have a greater level of agreement that they're interested in building relationships with parents and guardians. Similarly, as it relates to managing student behavior, staff reported a greater level of agreement regarding adherence to rules, the use of data to address behavior, and other behavior intervention systems. On this slide, staff have reported a greater level of agreement that physical environments at their schools or schools support teaching and learning. However, as it relates to professional growth opportunities, while YCSD staff meets the state average, the level of engagement is slightly below the region. Now to staff perceptions about the prevalence of student aggression. On this chart, again, a lower number is better. In other words, YCSD staff report lower levels of student aggression than both the region and the state. Now to staff perceptions about the prevalence of bullying. On this chart, again, a lower number indicates more disagreement on the levels of the prevalence of bullying. As a division, there is less agreement that prevalence of bullying exists when compared with both the region and the state. Next, on this chart, a higher number means fewer concerns about safety. Similar to instructional staff responses, YCSD staff have higher levels of agreement than both the state and Region Two. This means that our staff feel more safe and more secure when in schools than their colleagues across the region and the state. One of the questions staff also responded to was, my school is a good place to work and learn. As you can see, the division, region, and state were in somewhat the agree range. However, YCSD non-instructional staff reported slightly lowers of agreement than both the region and the state in this area. Now to the last dataset in this presentation. On this chart, represented is the percentage of non-instructional staff plans to return or to continue to work at their school or another school in the school division. In this regard, 95% of YCSD school-based non-instructional staff reported that they plan to stay, which are higher than both the region and the state. So the purpose of the survey is to improve working conditions for teachers and staff in Virginia's public schools. As we work to improve working conditions and increase teacher and staff retention, it is critically important to receive and to act on the feedback that our staff provided to us. The first step is to ensure that our principals share this data with their staff. In this area, we provided this information to our principal back in June, and we'll follow up that our staff have these datasets available to them. This is also a number that they reported on. Our staff reported about 25% of them that the data from the previous survey was provided to them. So we recognize we have to do some work in that regard as far as this data being made accessible to everyone, particularly as it relates to their school. Principals, again, have individual data. They will meet, they'll share that data, they'll collaborate with their staff, and it's important to share best practices because the data varies from school to school. And while comparing these results to previous surveys, particularly in this time of COVID and all of the factors associated may not be valid or reliable, comparing the results across schools within the same context makes a lot of sense. So there are a lot of examples of best practices that our principals can share with one another. And lastly, as our principals work to disaggregate these results, meet with their staff, collaborate on what it means, then they'll adjust the school improvement plans and monitor the effect of those interventions. Again, they're going to be school-specific, and Dr. Wrights will work with our principals and ensure that we follow through on this commitment to our staff. So as I finish this, I want to assure our employees that our feedback is important to us. As such, over the coming months, we'll work on disaggregating that data and putting things in place to address areas of both strength as well as improvement. And I wanted, again, to thank everyone for participating in that survey, for getting us this valuable data. And at this time, I'm ready to take your questions or comments.
So they take the survey. It's anonymous as far as their name? No?
Yes, it is, and VDOE promises that. Results do not come to us. They go directly to the Virginia Department of Education. They disaggregate the data and provide us with reports that are school-based as well as division averages. So I really would like staff to know that no one knows who they are, and the whole purpose is that there's a great level of anonymity, again, to guard against anyone feeling that they can't provide honest feedback throughout the survey.
The data comes back to you, and it can tell you, school-specific, exactly what's happening, but it's not necessarily names of the teachers that are on there. Okay. So it's already segregated out before it gets to you, and then you segregate it out for your principals.
Yes.
Send that out. As far as safety, you had mentioned bullying, and I think on the staff one, you talked about student aggression. Were there any other factors that were considered in safety in the questions?
Each of those domains include anywhere between five to seven to 10 questions. Tonight's presentation presents it as a group. However, we could drill down into the data to the question level to really get at the factors, because oftentimes, even within that group, you may be high in one area but low in another. So that's where the strength of the data lies, in identifying those areas. So yes, that is correct. It's related to school safety, it's related to the way students interact with one another, and a variety of other questions.
And I love the parent involvement, that that was so high. I think that's one of the things that we always talk about in York County that we're so proud of, is that we have so much parent involvement and just buy-in from those families. So, thank you.
Especially when it was the teachers that were saying that they are so involved. That's the best thing. You said the survey was administered in June?
Survey was administered before spring break in late, early to late March. It was open for a little bit over two weeks.
Right. Right. I just had a couple of questions about, on page seven, which was the school and community supports?
Was it Slide Seven or?
Well, it's Page Seven, Slide 13.
13.
Yeah. 13, 14. The, I see that we were lower there. Was the time to collaborate? If this is all of the schools lumped in, I can see the elementary schools saying, we don't have as much time to collaborate, whereas the high schools are the other end of the spectrum. So is this like a happy medium or?
So this is the average of division responses. So within that level, you're right. It may have been that elementary school teacher may respond in one way, that middle and high school may have responded differently.
Do you get a breakdown of that?
We do. And again, that information we provided specifically to our principals.
On the future professional plans, which is number 17 slide? What, I'm looking at this, and I'm thinking, the division average is 84.2. What's our average of people that retire each year?
We are keeping that data, but we're looking at three-year trends. Retention is very, very important to us. I don't have that data in front of me tonight, but certainly we could provide that.
I'm thinking that that's probably, that and moving because of military transfers would be two of the biggest.
That is such a good point to make because this is multifactorial, and I would caution anybody that uses causation in this data. There are a lot of factors, regional factors. When you take school divisions as far away as Bristol, Virginia, all the way to Northern Virginia, all the way to Hampton Robins, it's important to consider those averages.
The satisfaction rate is so high. It's over 90%.
That was the thing.
Non-instructional staff.
That I was happy about.
And my last one is on Slide 25. Now, that was concerns of the staff about school safety, right?
Yes. So there were a series of questions related to that about how they feel about schools, how they feel about emergency preparedness, our response plan, the crisis plan, and threat assessments. So our staff feel that, on average, they have fewer concerns about safety than both their regional and state colleagues.
That tracks along with the instructional staff, too, I believe.
Yep, that's right. That is consistent.
Thank you.
Looking at Slide 16 again, I'm just looking at that, there's a 40% or a 32% split or difference between the state averages, and a little bit more than that between the region average with it. And then, you know, in the next slide with 84% planning to return, I was just curious, you had mentioned it just a second ago to Mr. Schaefer, just about the difference between two years ago before the COVID stuff happened, and then the timing of the administration of the survey. At this point, I think everyone had gotten back into the classroom at this point in a hybrid setting and starting to get back in there, so.
Well, again, we have, but that may not be.
For the, yeah, yeah, yeah. For York County, that was, yeah. But to have a 91%, you know, overall job satisfaction rate with the, considering we had over 80% completion from the licensed and non-licensed staff, I think is impressive considering the difficulties that teachers and staff had last year with COVID.
It is, and I'll have to commend our principals in navigating that context because certainly we want folks to feel good about coming to work, and we want them to return. But at the same time, there's a lot of work to be done with our kids, and there's a lot of work about moving forward. So that's a tough line to navigate, and I did commend our line supervisors for doing a good job with that.
Yeah, and I know it would be difficult to compare the results from two years previously before anything with COVID, but I'm just curious what the delta would be between the two.
That is such a great point because as I dug into the data, there are some areas where they may have had five questions in a domain or group, where now there may be more like eight to 10. There are some times where we looked at percentages, now we're really looking at points. So I would caution anyone in trying to compare this. Under normal circumstances, if all things were compared, all things were equal, certainly we could have a side-by-side. But I think most folks, overwhelming majority of folks, recognize, one, context is different; two, the instrument is different; and three, the construct of the instrument has changed. So I would caution anyone trying to draw significant comparison with the previous survey.
But with the way the results come back, the school administration and division administration does use that to adjust the school improvement plans and things like that for the school needs for what the staff returns, correct?
That is correct, and we'll continue to monitor. Some of our folks made the start to give a different component of that survey. As you're monitoring an area, and then you will give a different component to see that progress is made, so that is correct.
And there's no way to see, like with SOL data, you see the student subgroups, but there's no way to see such as like years of service or anything, because I'd be curious what it would be like for someone who maybe has worked five or less years than someone who's more experienced.
There will be some new teacher-specific responses. Dr. Orban's statement is going to present that information, I believe, in February or March, new teacher in her first year. But as it relates to all of the data that I presented, nope. Some of the groups get so small that we probably could threaten the, again, the anonymity of the survey, and we wanted to protect that anonymity. I'm sure VDOE thought about that in getting down to that level.
Okay. We have a few schools right now who are piecing together the final stages of sending out, sort of to check the temperature of their buildings now. It won't be as many items, but there'll be, you know, eight to 10 questions just to check the temperature on some of these areas they're working on, because it's not just the principal who can work on the working conditions in the school, it's everybody working together. So we're looking forward to those going out, I think, in the next week or two.
That was going to be my question, is we've got, perhaps we're a little, you know, if we're under 85 or 80% in a particular area, that's probably a little lower than we want to be. And then, as you said, we've got off years, so then the leadership team can go ahead and build an instrument and do it internally. That's great. This is a great dataset. Can you get the raw data from VDOE?
So.
And leverage the data?
Yes, we get it down to the specific question, which is very helpful, particularly what you're seeing are the categories, but really the value of that is getting down to a specific question, and then comparing that to see, there's some areas where extremely strong, and there's some areas where we've got a little bit of work to do. So this paints a picture for the division, and that variation from school to school is going to be important, and the action steps are going to be different. But yeah, that's the value that you could get out of these questions.
You're right, because you've got a great participation rate. We've got years of data, although the construct's changing a little bit. But to be able to put our fingers on that raw data and then continue to drill down is very important, because that's really all we've got, the division level, aside from the instruments that they're using in the building, is my sense.
Okay, right, that's good.
And I thought, by the way, I don't want to make a declarative statement, but bullying was, it was still nearly, it was still, it was 2.76%, I think, so, nearly 50%. So I think that's something to also take a look at, prevalence of. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much, Dr. Vladu, for sharing the update regarding working conditions here in YCSD. Our next strategic plan update is for Goal Five, Objective Five, One, Class Size. Dr. Shandor.
Thank you. And Dr. Vladu is going to stay right where he is, and he's going to work through class size, so I'll turn it over to Dr. Vladu.
Thank you, Dr. Shandor, Mr. Higginbotham, members of the board. At this time, I'll provide a report on Goal Five, which is class size. In our last work session, I provided a report on staffing. Tonight's report provides a strategic update for an objective under Goal Five, which is efficient and effective operation of the school division. The purpose of this objective is to monitor the board's commitment to smaller class sizes. Information presented tonight will affect the status of division as of the 10-day count when students were enrolled within the 10-day window. Again, think of, we started on August 30th and takes us to the 10th date of school, and that's when the data was extracted for this report. Before I begin, I want to take a few moments to review the class size requirements set forward by the Virginia Legislature through the Standards of Quality Act. It's 24 to 1 in kindergarten with no class being larger than 29 students. If the average daily membership of any kindergarten class exceeds 24 pupils, a full-time teacher's A shall be assigned to the class. 24 to 1 in grades one, two, and three, with no class being larger than 30 students, and 25 to 1 in grades four through six, with no classes being larger than 35 students. Through our strategic goal, the school board has committed to maintaining class sizes that are much smaller than the state allowable limits. As a result, this year, as in years past, we follow the same class size targets. It is important to remember that the decisions to shift staff members or allot additional resources were made in consultation with principals based on both projected and actual enrollment numbers and in relationship to parent educator support. As a reminder, these specific class size goals are related to division averages, and individual classes will vary. As the school board, you're committed to the same class sizes during the last strategic plan cycle at the secondary level. It is important to remember that the state has no class size limit in grade seven. It is important to remember that the state has no class size limit in grades seven through twelve. And the division target ratio for secondary core classes is thirty students or below pending available resources. The only exception as per the standards of quality to this limit is in English, which is an average of twenty-four students. Again, to clarify, that's for the entire English department, not for any particular class. The state code requires us to provide data to the school board on individual classes. So in board docs tonight, you have a list of every school class or every class in the division at every school. And please note that that report does not include assignment affair educators, reading specialists, or any other support staff members that are assigned to those classes. And as a reminder, we do monitor these numbers closely on a weekly basis and we continue to dialogue with principals and supervisors about class sizes. In elementary, we monitor individual grades as well as K-two and three-five averages. So if you look at the slide, the column on the extreme right represent current year's number as of the ten-day count. Also in this chart, for comparison purposes, I included a five-year class size trend. As you can see, our class size averages for K-two is eighteen point five-three, which is well below the twenty-two-one goal that we, or you established as a school board. Also in three-five, the class average is twenty-two point six-five, which is well below the twenty-five-to-one goal established by the school. So yet another metric that we're very diligent about monitoring is the ratio between our Title One versus our non-Title One schools. So these federal regulations require lower class size in Title One school. As you can see in K-two, we are lower in Title One schools as well as in grades three-five. Again, we're lower than non-Title One schools. In middle school, you'll find that current numbers in the right column. As you can see in the last column on the right, all content areas are similar, if not lower than last year. I do want to inform you of some classes at the middle, middle school level that are near or above thirty. At Queens Lake Middle School, we have one class at thirty-one students. That is a criminal justice course. At Grafton Middle, we have no classes that exceed thirty students. At Tab Middle, no core classes that exceed thirty. And at York Middle, we have one class with thirty-one students. It's an art class, one sculpture class at thirty-one, and one introduction to programming and game design at thirty-one students. As they relate to our high schools, the most recent class size averages are found in the right column. And as you will see, class size averages are similar to last year and significantly lower than the board and the state recommended levels. At Bruton High School, we have no classes over thirty outside of P E and music. At Grafton High School, no classes over thirty. At Tab High School, we have one Spanish class at thirty-one students. I believe I updated the board on staffing levels in that area. And at York High School, no classes over thirty. So this concludes my report and I'm happy to take any questions regarding class size if I have.
I just have one, I think it's a comment, just to reiterate that whatever our division has done for many years now, we've exceeded the state mandates on class sizes to be lower, lower than the state requires. And I'm happy to see that many of our core classes are well below the, the average that we've set. You know, I know some of them are art and the gaming, some of the more popular courses. And I know it's difficult to, to, to try to do that with scheduling when our, our children take different classes, especially in the middle and the high school level, and you're trying to, to get their class schedule right, it's difficult. And sometimes you hit right at that edge or maybe go over one. But I think y'all done an outstanding job in keeping our class sizes small, so thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you, Dr. Vladu.
Thank you very much. Our next update is an operational update. Dr. Shandor.
Thank you, Mr. Higginbotham. Dr. Carroll is here to present his, I guess, every-two-week report related to all of our operational updates related to COVID and our metrics, so I'll turn it over to Dr. Carroll.
Let's see if we can get this to work here.
Do you want to, Mr. Higginbotham, would you like to take a quick break?
Sure. We will take a five-minute recess while we get technology up and running for us. Thank you very much.
Do you have any batteries on?
Can we use a wired mouse?
I don't think you can. It's up there.
Oh, that's right. Good, Dr. Carroll.
I'm ready.
Okay, we are back in session. We appreciate everyone's patience as we got our technology working appropriately. Dr. Carroll.
All right, thank you, Chairman Higginbotham, members of the board. Tonight I bring you your operational update that you've asked for every couple of weeks and a lot of this will be familiar ground to you, so let's go ahead and get going. First of all, we see the York County locality statistics. We do remain below the state average. Since our steady decline from the start of school until mid-September, we've seen a fluctuating level of community transmission since September thirtieth and it's been remaining in the high one-hundreds. Today's poll of data came from today, but it was citing October eighth. And so this data is three days old, but we were at one eighty-one point three. As far as our dashboard, we do see some improving numbers. Here you see a, a poll from earlier today. Our numbers are slowly declining as we sit today with thirty-five positives in comparison to about double that number. We were at sixty-eight on September twentieth. Today, we expect our typical Monday bounce that we get as cases come in from over the weekend. But our bottom continues to drop down. About every other week, we see a smaller number. So this is the smallest number we've seen in a while. And that follows through also to our quarantines. It's been a while since we've seen quarantines under a hundred. So, and this reflects the fact that four weeks ago, I reported out to you one hundred and forty-seven quarantines. The last meeting was one twenty-two and now today at ninety-nine. And each time I, I bring you vaccination data and we do continue to see these numbers incrementally increase. And so our twelve-to-fifteen-year-olds now for first doses are at fifty-three point five percent with forty-three point eight percent fully vaccinated. And the sixteen-to-seventeen-year-olds are, have increased to an even sixty-two point zero percent first doses with fifty-one point nine percent fully vaccinated. And as we look at the adults in our community, now is up to seventy-one point seven percent with a first dose and sixty-five point one percent fully vacs, vaccinated. So we are seeing ourselves getting to about a two-thirds fully vaccinated. As far as vaccination news, the FDA, we're expecting a decision on approval for ages five to eleven near the end of the month. And so we are doing preliminary planning for any shock clinic would happen sometime in November, so we're working on that. And as I've reported last time, there is still no guidance yet on mandatory vaccinations for Virginia K-12 educational staff. I also want to give you an update on transportation. We do remain significantly understaffed, but we did add two new drivers, starting not just this week, but today. And they're both in the York zone today and we have two more in the pipeline. And so this should help us significantly in reaching our goals for getting students to and from school a timely basis. You'll remember at the last meeting that I talked about the fact that we had an incredibly high percentage of quarantines and isolations that involve the transportation office. Those have all cycled through now, so we're at full strength there. And we are still working through a special transportation efficiency review, trying to balance efficiency with also the needs of those particular students. And that's, that's a long process and we're working through it. Also, I'm pleased to report that we have approved an eight-hour driver contract now. That has, has not been in, in effect at all since I've been involved with the division. I think this goes way back where we would not write contracts any higher than, let's say, seven hours. So now we have contracts that will allow drivers to be forty-hour employees. Now, they've always been able to get benefits and things like that, but this also affects their pensions and contributions to that pension. So this should be a, you know, a proper contract for them and also to make it more attractive to work longer hours. And before I leave this, just one more thing. In our YCSD digest that we put out last week, I did want to mention food service and make sure that you are aware that we are starting to see some supply chain issues there with food and paper goods. And Mr. Schaefer's shaking his head. And especially with, I said, chicken and paper goods are, are two things right now. We're trying to do everything we can to stock up as much as we can and to make sure we're prepared for feeding students and being as flexible with the paper products that we're using. That continues or concludes my report. I welcome any questions yet.
I would just like to make a comment about the bus drivers starting this week. Over the weekend, I saw a bus on my neighborhood and of course I have some guests at my home and they go on, wow, you have school on Saturday or Sunday. And I said, now I'm sure that's the bus driver's training, so they'll be ready for the first of the week, so thank you. And I'll thank them for coming out and doing that and being available to, to be able to start sooner, so thank you.
And I'll say thank you very much from the York zone. Super appreciative that we can get some help down there. I know that B dot construction didn't help things over the past couple of weeks, but hopefully getting a few more drivers on that route and this construction will be over and we can get back to full speed, so thank you.
It's just nice to see the numbers continue to trend down, both in active cases and quarantines. And I, I hope we continue to see it move down as, as we continue through the fall.
And vaccinations trend up?
That's right.
Thank you, Dr. Carroll. So our next presentation, Mr. Higginbotham, board members, we are, we've moved Mr. Shearhart from the general meetings at the end of the month to the work session so we can potentially have some more dialogue, so. There we go. All right, so Mr. Shearhart is here and he's going to share our capital projects report. Mr. Shearhart?
Thank you, Dr. Shandor, Mr. Chairman Higginbotham, and members of the board. And Dr. Shandor, here's your capital, capital projects report for the month of October. We have multiple projects going on here. First of these is Bruton High School, the Learning Commons School, the Art and Restful Renovations. Been an ongoing project, but we're getting close to the end of this one here. This project is about ninety-five percent complete. And the contractor is waiting on, the contractor is in the process of getting his final building inspections here. The architect went through on Thursday and created his final punch list for the contractor to take care of issues, small, small issues. And the first shipment of furniture arrived last Wednesday. There is additional furniture arriving October twentieth and then the last furnishings, a few credenzas and things like that will arrive in December. So I just shot, thought I'd show you some before and after pictures here of what's going on in, in the construction area. This is a classroom space before the renovation here. This is just next to the library there. And you can see it was a computer lab and this is what it looks like now. So dramatic change here, new ceilings, new lights, L E D lighting dim. And then you see the new floor here. This is furniture that was shipped in on Wednesday and we just staged it here, pre-staged it here. They're, they were working in the other large room with some of this furniture goes into the other large room, but we just pre-staged it in here. So that's not what's going in the Learning Commons, in the classroom. They have tiered seating and tiered tables that are going in there, much like the York High School Learning Commons classroom. And this is a picture standing at the back door, the, the library, the old, the original library. Looking at the front door, you see the front door there, the wooden front door there to the left-hand side of the picture there. Obviously, we've already removed the bookcases here that were in the center of the room, but you can get an idea of what that library used to look like before. And this is what it looks like now. So this is not a picture, I mean, this is an actual picture of it. It's not an artist, architect's rendering or anything. This is an actual picture. This is exactly what it looks like from the back door. You can see now we have a glass door at the main entrance there. You can see off to the left-hand side here, those are the doors for the collaboration spaces. And then look, turning around the other side, this is looking from the front door in. You can see again, the collaboration spaces now are on the right-hand side. And then through the windows there on the left-hand side into the classroom, you can see that furniture that you saw in the other picture. So it looks really, really nice. So the next project is the York High School roof repair and coating. This project, I've mentioned it before in multiple meetings, that this project was delayed due to material delays. Contractors throughout the United States are having issues trying to get steel, roof insulation, PVC pipe, et cetera, just slowing down everything. But this, these contractors have been doing great progress, steady progress here with the materials they have on site. They've been able to repair blisters, they're coating the roof. There are, they have a little bit of insulation, so they're replacing insulation in areas they have the insulation for. So they're, they're working, they're steady at it. They're not giving up. They're steady at it. The roof insulation, the bulk of it will not, still not arrive until February. I asked for an update on that and that's still the date that they, that the manufacturer said they can get it to them. And there will be a brief pause in coating during the winter due to the weather. So here's a picture of the roof over the auditorium there at York High School. The blisters have been repaired and it's been coated. You can see that here. And then here's the roof over the, the gymnasium. You can see that's been coated as well. So they are making. So they are making, they are making progress despite the fact that they can't have all the materials they would like to have. The next project is Seaford Elementary School, renovation and additions to that school. The civil drawings are undergoing their final review. That's their fourth review, so they're, they should be wrapping it up here very close, very shortly. The architect is in the process of preparing bid documents for submission to purchasing. And then you can see there's multiple dates there that we anticipate this construction to start end to end. The next one is Tab Middle and New York Middle School, these are the gym renovations. And the contractor has completed all of his work there. Our maintenance department is reinstalling banners and pull up bars, et cetera, that they took down before the renovations, and that was to safe keep, safe keep them and, you know, and protect them. And then also, all student, the students are using all three gyms, two gyms at Tab Middle and then the one gym at York Middle. So here's a picture of what the gym used to look like at Tab Middle School. This is the main gym, you see the plastic floor here, and it's a little bit in need of refurbishment. And this is what it looks like now. There you go. So it's got the LED lights in there, it's got a new paint job, and you see the wood floor in there. And then here's a picture of what the auxiliary gym looked like, looked very drab. It also looked darker than this. I don't know why it looks so bright in this picture, the lights back there were very dim. But it looks like this now. So new, new wood floors, new paint job, and the new LED lights. They can dim these lights, they can, so they can do a lot of different things in these gymnasiums. They're very excited, the kids are all over that, oh, look at those gyms. And this is the new logo that we put in the middle of the floor. They didn't have anything there before, so we brought this on. And then we go to York Middle School, and this is what their gymnasium looked like before. Also, the plastic floor you see here, it definitely needed some more overhaul here too. The HID lights, which were energy hogs, and so we took those all down and put the LED lights up in here. And this is what that one looks like. And then here's their, here's their logo on the floor. And that's my last picture for this evening. Do you have any questions for me?
So the lights no longer take five minutes to warm up to come back.
You had a chance to go through Tab Middle last week, and it is, it's dynamite. And, you know, both chism and pool, and we got a chance to speak to a couple of coaches and staff members there in the gym, and they're, they're very, very pleased. Yeah. So thank you very much, Mark. That's all for the team and the contractors.
Yeah, the, the Bruton library and classroom, it's unbelievable to think how much bigger it just looks. When you clear some of that stuff out and everything with that oak plan, it looks really nice.
It's nice.
Yeah. Last, last I was there is right when they started construction at the end of last year.
Excited to see it when it's complete.
Absolutely.
I know when we were doing that at York High School, all the kids were, they just wanted to see. Anytime anyone would open the door, what's it look like, what's it look like? So I'm sure the kids at Bruton High School are the same way, just so anticipatory.
Great presentation, Mark. Next time, just wear a different tie.
I thought it just had spots on it.
Thank you, Mr. Shearheart.
All right. Our next presentation is a return to school instructional update, Dr. Shandor.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Higginbotham and board members. Again, we, we're going to bring up two presenters this evening. We have Dr. Karen Cagle, our Director of Curriculum and Instruction, and Dr. David Wright, Director of Leadership and Accountability. And they're going to provide you some updates related to instruction. So I'll turn it over to them.
Good evening, Chairman Higginbotham, Dr. Shandor, members of the board. If you recall last month, Mrs. Skinner shared information about our students' performance in regards to state and federal accountability. Tonight, we're going to provide a brief update on the work we're doing to ensure our students are mastering our grade level curriculum. On this slide, this is an outline of the information we're going to share with you this evening. I'll begin by sharing a brief assessment update, and Dr. Karen Cagle, Director of Curriculum Instruction, will provide an overview of the actions we've put into place to support unfinished learning as we close the presentation with a summary of the division's on-time graduation for FY '21. The new growth assessments provided data showing exactly where our students are in reading and mathematics as they return to school after the disruptions of learning caused by the pandemic. This school year, students in grades three through eight across Virginia public schools had to take the growth assessments in reading and mathematics. These reports, the data reports, were shared with building principals so that they can identify and share their, with their instructional staff, what students have already learned, as well as the skills they may need additional help with during the school year. These assessments are non-graded, and they are based on the previous school year's content. In mid-November, parents will be provided access to a portal created by the Virginia Department of Education, which will guide them to a better understanding of the growth assessment results. Additionally, a video will be provided to walk families through the interpretation of those results. Another assessment we had this year in the fall was in grades three through eight, where they took the measures of academic progress, our MAP testing, and reading and math. This assessment allows principals and instructional staff to have useful reports at their fingertips to make data-informed decisions. Teachers use this MAP data to plan for differentiated instruction, develop interventions for struggling students, and see what students are ready to learn next. Teachers can confidently tailor instruction to challenge every student, whether they are below, at, or above grade level, and the MAP is aligned to our Virginia standards of learning. A few other additional measurement tools we used this year. It was on this slide, and I wanted to note that not all students are given these assessments. Many of these assessments are sprinkled throughout our grade levels with the purpose of providing data to drive instruction. In fact, three of our assessments this year are required to be administered by the state. The first one is the feeder school data. Middle and high school principals are, have been provided with student SOL performance data by skill from the feeder schools. So the data provides sixth and ninth grade teachers with additional information as they plan for new instruction. Then we have the unit pre-assessments. This is where teachers have been asked to survey student skills prior to unit instruction. This information identifies which students may need additional supports or enrichment as they start that particular unit. These next three assessments are dealing particularly just with reading. We have the phonological awareness literacy screening, which is our PALS assessment, and that particular assessment is just in grades K through three. That assessment assesses our students' knowledge of critical literacy fundamentals. Then we have the oral reading records, the ORR, and that is a comprehensive assessment that students read aloud to the teacher from a leveled text. In particular, that purpose of that assessment is to allow our teachers to do small group instruction and have it tailored within their classrooms specific to student needs. And then we have the DSA, which is the developmental spelling assessment, which identifies the developmental spelling stage of all of our students. Now, Dr. Cagle will walk you through our ongoing monitoring procedures to support student growth.
Thank you, Dr. Wright. Board members and Dr. Shandor, I'm pleased to be here tonight to share with you the work our team is doing to support unfinished learning. In order to provide additional support, each of our instructional coordinators is focused on one subject area this year. They're visiting schools, and they're making their priority in their schedule. They're doing, they're meeting teachers, they're building relationships with teachers, they're visiting classrooms, they're supporting curriculum, instruction, and assessment, they're attending professional learning communities, and they're helping identify and secure resources. We began the year, and we continue to provide ongoing professional development in the area of pre-assessments and formative assessments. This helps our teachers drive instruction. We've also provided training in educational technology to support our one-to-one initiative. And we've also trained on different classroom models, such as the use of stations or small group instruction, to be able to move learning forward while also addressing those learning gaps. Our own staff have developed and implemented a YCSD coaching model, and they've provided training to over 30 coaches and coordinators so far this year. This supports that high-quality, ongoing, personalized training for individual teachers as they apply these strategies in the classroom. We have added some additional resources. This includes online resources that support in-person instruction. When our fourth grade teachers noticed that some of our students needed additional practice developing those cursive writing skills that they learned last year, we ordered workbooks for those, and we have delivered those to the schools. Many elementary math manipulatives this year were sent home last year to, and we've had to replace those, so we've ordered those. And we have also identified and ordered additional math tools to support both elementary and secondary students. Hands-on science this year is very important. This involves labs, so we needed additional supports for this as well, and we've ordered those. Another way to support unfinished learning is the collective planning and the problem solving that our grade level and content teachers do. So we are providing stipends for several of our teachers to lead the professional learning communities across the division. The school division has shared information on the ESSR grants in previous presentations and on our website. So on this slide, I just listed a few of the components of the grants that specifically address unfinished learning. So we're currently in the process of adding additional support staff. This includes math coaches, secondary literacy coaches, and student achievement coaches. The schools have been given funds to pay staff to help students before and after school, as well as on weekends. We're also looking at the possibility of paying tutors to come into the school during the day to provide remediation to students if needed. So last year, our e-tutoring, our online tutoring was very successful, and we're planning to offer this again this year. With the current staffing shortages, we're going to do it a little bit differently. We're partnering with a company to provide this service, and this is very similar to what our neighboring school divisions are doing. So we are very proud of the work our teachers are doing, and we have some teachers doing great work and helping our students with the unfinished learning. So we want them to share their practices with their peers. So we are offering to, opportunities for these teachers to provide professional development in an ongoing way, packaged PD for their colleagues, and we're paying them to do that. We have over 10 teachers who have already submitted proposals for the first semester to provide professional development to their colleagues. So before I finish for tonight, I want to just provide some updates on on-time graduation. If you recall last month, when Ms. Skinner reported our state-federal accountability information, the state had not yet, had not yet released the on-time graduation rates. So since that time, this information has been released. So the next two slides capture our division's progress. So just as a reminder, on-time graduation rate is the percentage of students who entered high school for the first time in ninth grade and earned a Board of Education-approved diploma within four years. So if you look at the slide, I'm really pleased to share that the graduation rate for the York County School Division class of 2021 was 97.62%. And you'll notice that this is the highest it's been in five years. As you can see in the chart, all, all of our high schools showed improvements on their on-time graduation rates. Additionally, 62% of the class of 2021 earned advanced diplomas, advanced studies diploma. So on this slide, it shows the on-time graduation rates by subgroups. And then looking at this data, you can see that three of our subgroups showed improvements last year. So in closing, we'd like to recognize the hard work of staff, students, and families. We attribute the increased graduation rates to the successful implementation of strategic goals, ongoing progress monitoring, that one-to-one student coaching, and the partnerships we have with our families. On behalf of our department, I want to thank you for the opportunity to share this information with you tonight. And at this time, Dr. Wright and I, we welcome any questions or comments you may have.
I just have a couple of quick comments. I appreciate all the hard work that you and our teachers are doing for the remediation and all the support staff, the things that you're implementing, the things you're doing, and more especially the division-wide online tutoring that started out in the last year. And I know that's been a big help with everything with the pandemic. And excellent work on our graduation rates for meeting and exceeding our, our goals for that. And one last thing I just need to make a comment on, and it's probably silly that I even need to make a comment on camera about this. But there's a lot of misinformation on social media. People joke about our, if you put our kids in cars that were stick shift and automatic, they would, and wrote in cursive, they would know how to act. Well, we do teach cursive writing. And I have people ask me that in the public all the time, or comment about that in the public. And I have to correct them and go, we do teach cursive, it's something we still teach, we teach it. So I was glad that that was part of our presentation here to remind me to mention that and say that. So thank you. But thank you for all your hard work and everything you're doing, and our teachers.
Thank you.
I have a question about the, the new SGAs for this year. When they're implemented, are they like SOL tests where particularly at the secondary level, like middle school, they have to create a new schedule and placement for the kids to take it? Or are they just doing it in their classes on their one-to-one devices? Do we know?
They're doing it on their devices. The scheduling, I am not confident on how they do the scheduling, but I can get back with you on it.
And then I was just curious, like for students who move in after the SGA or, and other tests being done, are they getting the SGA administered so that we know where to move forward with them?
Of October. Okay. So any new students that come in, we do test them. And just going back to your question, the SGAs are an abbreviated version of the SOL test. So they're anywhere between 17 and 20 questions. So it's an abbreviated version, so it doesn't take our kids that long of a time to take the test. And we create schedules just like we do with SOL. So it's a, a schedule that where it is, the, the teachers are in the classroom with the students, they're on their laptops. There's no disruptions in the classroom, just to make sure that we get a very accurate view of what our kids know.
Okay, thank you.
You talked about that, the parent portal for VDOE. Will parents be able to see their child's data?
Yes.
Specific child's data, and there's going to be a tutorial to walk them through that?
Yes. And VDOE will be creating that portal for them to go in and see and view their child's results.
Wow, that's amazing.
Quite a tiered construct together in a fairly rapid VDOE, you know, with regard to, to gathering this.
You talked about the pre-assessments, that's Mastery Connect. I know we, is that what you're talking about? I know we talked a lot about that last year. The pre and the post tests, are we, as a division, are we creating those assessments? Or are those a canned assessment that comes with the program?
We, we have, in some of our core content areas, created those, but not all of them. So math, we have pre-assessments on, but we're still creating them in the other subject areas. And our teachers do create some and share the tool, you are able to share within the tool.
And my understanding is you do the pre-assessments, you can kind of see where your kids are. And then as a teacher, if your kids score 100% in the pre-assessment, you know what? We can glance over this, we're going to kind of go through it, but we're going to go through it pretty quickly. Whereas if you do a pre-assessment on some other subject, and you're noticing that that's maybe a place where they didn't get a whole lot last year, we're going to dive in a little deeper, that's the whole point of that.
And it's even more individualized than that. You can see particular students. You know, that's why we're doing the training and the small group instruction and the station work so that you can actually, you know, there may be a group of students who didn't get it, but others who did. So you can even, even see that data.
No, I think that's great stuff. And then can you just say one more time what the percentage was of kids that got an advanced diploma?
It was 62.8%.
Okay, thank you. I just think you should say that a little louder, that's all. Say it louder, yeah. I just, no, I think that's something to really be proud of.
Yes.
I think that's great, yes. Thank you.
One minor, two, two minor questions. Map data, is that, do teachers access that through a portal? Or does VDO, VDO, VDOE provide it directly?
So it's not provided by VDOE, it's our own assessment that we do here in York County. And so we provide all of the data to the principals, and they disaggregate it and differentiate it down to the instructional staff.
Got it. And then you mentioned we, so we're going to outsource the division-wide online tutoring, right? Okay, that's good. So we can, yeah, understand why, with regard to staffing shortages and make sure that we can continue that. Because Mr. Hudson said very valuable. Great, thank you.
Last year, I ask you a question.
Last year, I asked you a question about remediation and how we were doing it. And it seems like now that you can tailor the remediation per child, per subject, per need in a number of different ways in order to have tutorial instruction, have them work in small groups, any number of ways to achieve getting them back up, right?
Absolutely.
So there should not be any kids that fall through your cracks or anything. I think everyone's been tested and checked, so.
But I think the beauty of it, the whole entire thing, is the fact that not only are you looking at students that may need some extra help, but we're also looking at the opposite end, where students who are excelling. So we're able to capture all of them and either accelerate them or provide them that remedial help that they may need.
That's it, that's it. I had a couple of emails last year about it.
Yeah, individualized, we've taken it to the next step and then so.
And I think we need to give kudos to the teachers and staff too who are taking the data and adjusting it to the idea of sometimes differentiating one lesson for six, seven, eight different needs in the classroom, or more, I'm sure. I think that the amount of time and effort it takes, we need to commend the staff for that as well.
You're exactly right. And they're trying to learn the technology with the one-to-one program, which supports this, right? We have a lot of online resources to support this as well. So they're learning all the new things and implementing them to give the students what they need.
I think even now, it's more important because so many kids are coming to us in different ways. I mean, there were kids that were homeschooled, there were kids that were in private school. I mean, they're coming to us just in so many different ways. But this gives us a chance to find out where exactly you are so we can help you, so it's great.
Thank you very much, Dr. Cagle and Dr. Wright, for your presentation.
Thank you.
Great job, guys, thank you.
That was the last presentation on our agenda this evening, but we do have a few policies to review. Our first policy is a quadrennial review of Section C, the General School Administration of York County School Board Manual. Dr. Shandor, would you like to share some more information?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Higginbotham. Actually, Dr. Carroll has all three of these items under discussion this evening, so I'll just turn it over to Dr. Carroll, let him roll through.
All right, thank you, Dr. Shandor. Excuse me. All right, so first before you, board, is you have the quadrennial review of Section C, General School Administration. As you know, we bring policy sections to you every four years for your review to make sure that we catch anything that might have been missed and to make sure that we are up to date with state code. So currently, Section C has 15 policies. Tonight, I put before you two new policies that would go into that policy file. Five that we believe, staff believes, that require revision. And then 10 that would be simply restated. And I'll give you the highlights here. So first of all, there would be new policy CLA, reporting acts of violence and substance abuse. This is driven solely by the fact that there is a new state code that changed what needs to be reported to law enforcement and different bodies. So this new policy outlines the necessary steps for required reporting. The second brand-new policy is CMA, Quality Profiles. And this new policy is driven by requirements to report out on the school quality profiles and academic performance. As far as the five revisions, first one is CBA, Qualifications and Duties of the Superintendent. Now, when you review this policy, it's going to look like wholesale changes are happening, but really, there's no change of consequence here. Most of it is just a grammatical and format exercise. But there is a revised statement about performance in the first section, and a new statement about participation in professional development and standards. And there is also a legal reference update. And CBB, Appointment and Term of the Division Superintendent. This includes new rules on the 180-day period a division needs to appoint a new superintendent if a vacancy occurs, with parameters for an extension, if desired, of the search period. CBG is the third policy for revision, and that's about evaluation of the superintendent. Once again, this one's mostly grammatical changes with one new statement that evaluations include identification of areas of individual strengths and weaknesses, and recommendations for appropriate professional activities. There's also a legal reference update. The fourth revision is Policy CH, which is Policy Implementation. It replaces the word promulgate with the phrase "create an update" in regard to regulations and a legal reference change. And the last revision is Policy CZ, Student Handbook. New language is inserted regarding availability of the Student Handbook. That is all of the revisions. As I stated earlier, the 10 remaining policies are restatements from the previous format. And staff recommends that you schedule these revisions for a first reading at the next meeting.
Any questions or comments for Dr. Carroll? All right, we will let him roll through. His next one is JJAC, Student Athlete Concussions During Extracurricular Activities. Dr. Carroll?
Thank you, Dr. Shandor. Board, we place before you a rewrite of JJAC. This was an existing policy, but we've completely rewritten it based on BSBA model policy, and it retains the title of Student Athlete Concussions During Extracurricular Activities. The purpose is to make sure that we comply with changes in state code. We've already changed our practice to mirror what's in this policy. Highlights here are that parents would review on an annual basis information about concussions and sign an acknowledgement statement after doing so. They also, if a student would be suspected of concussion in a practice or a game, they will be removed and cannot return until they have been evaluated and receive written clearance to do so. And as I stated before, this is for any game or practice. It also includes a return-to-learn protocol. We want to make sure that school personnel are alert to cognitive and academic issues that the student may be experiencing, and the personnel will accommodate the gradual return to full participation in academic activities. And there will also be a standard operating procedure that will accompany this. This is, staff recommends the scheduling of this policy, JJAC, for a first reading.
Questions or comments? All right, then, our last discussion of a new policy is File JJAD, Sudden Cardiac Arrest in Student Athletes. Dr. Carroll?
Thank you. Board, we place before you a similar policy, but this is a proposed new policy. It is, the purpose is to comply with changes in the state code. This is for JJAD, which deals with sudden cardiac arrest in student athletes. Once again, we are already practicing the changes or the policies, the procedures that would be covered by this policy. And similar to JJAC, parents would review on an annual basis symptoms that may lead to sudden cardiac arrest. Those parents or guardians would need to sign a state acknowledging receipt of that information. And if a student athlete is experiencing symptoms, they will be removed from play until they are evaluated and receive a written clearance. Staff recommends that Policy JJAD be recommended for first reading at the next meeting.
Questions? Thank you very much, Dr. Carroll.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. Thank you. The school board appreciates all the presenters this evening who shared information, and we recognize the work involved in keeping us all updated. At this time, the work session is adjourned. And I now call to order the October 11, 2021 special meeting of the York County School Board. And we have one item that does require the board's approval. That is consideration of approval of Resolution 21-42, a resolution to approve specific School Division procurement. Dr. Shandor?
Thank you, Mr. Higginbotham. And again, good evening, board members. We have Mr. Bill Bowen, who's our Chief Financial Officer, who's going to share some information specific to this procurement. Doctor, or, sorry, Doctor or Mr. Bowen?
Thank you, Dr. Shandor. Just taking about the members of the board. Resolution 2142 is a procurement resolution consisting of five items of over $50,000, and therefore requires your approval. Just real quickly, I'll read these items. The first is synthetic field replacement at Bailey Field. The second is the renewal, annual renewal of our centrics license. Third is whole phonics decodable reader sets for kindergarten through second grade. This supports our unfinished learning and beginning reading skill instruction. The fourth item is strategic planning services. And last, as Dr. Cagle mentioned, online tutoring services. I'll be happy to answer the questions that you might have.
What are strategic planning services?
Strategic planning services, this is where we will contract with a third party with expertise in strategic plan and development. They will assist the work that will be led by Ms. Goff in the development of our next five-year plan.
When was the last time we replaced the field at Bailey? Not just repaired it, but when was the last time we replaced it?
I believe the field is over 13 years old.
Okay. And do we know what the average life of that synthetic field is?
The early versions were about 8 to 10. So we were one of the early adopters, so we certainly exceeded the life, and we have had multiple repairs to the field. It's becoming a safety concern.
Okay, do we know what estimated length the new field would have, or would that be similar, 8 to 10?
Actually, they've exceeded that now. They're in upwards of 12 years.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, then, we need a motion and a second to approve Resolution 21-42.
I move we approve Resolution 24-42.
And I'll second the motion. Board, we have a motion and a second. You may hold the board.
Yes, the motion is made by Mrs. Carols and seconded by Mr. Richardson for Resolution 2142. Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Ms. Carols?
Yes.
Mr. Myatt?
Yes.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
The motion has passed 5 to 0, thank you.
All right, we are now in need of a closed session to discuss personnel matters. Could a board member please make a motion and a second